Like to call to order the Griffin Spalding County Board of Educational Work Session, 111522 at 4:00 PM. If you would, please place all electronic communication devices on silent or vibrate at this time. Thank you. And Mr. Holmes, I'll have you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as one.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. All right, next is the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Four zero. Not sure about Ms. Cook. I haven't heard from Ms. Cook, so I can only assume she'll be here. But the record shows she's not present at this point in time.
Um, Madam Chair, if I can regress just a moment, I thought we had already with this agenda, the addition that we needed to put in there about some vehicles?
It's in there.
I don't see it in there.
Uh, consent.
Last one.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll keep my motion the same.
Chair, may I?
Absolutely.
At some point, I do want to take an opportunity to introduce to you and other members of the board, our procurement, our purchasing agent, who will be in the audience. And so I can either do that at the end, I can do that somewhere between presentations, but I think you're going to hear more and more of her work. You'll see more and more of her face, or her name at least, and I want to make sure that you could connect the name and the face. At your pleasure, if you'll just let me know when that's appropriate for you.
I think now would be great.
Mrs. Bullock, if you would, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Mr. Jordan Bullock.
Hey, Jordan.
If you'll recall, you approved the addition of a procurement agent to the Finance Department. Ms. Bullock is the person responsible for reaching out to all of the dealers, making sure that we're following procurement guidelines, helping us to better understand what the inventory is relative to whether it be kitchen equipment, vehicles, you name it. But again, now that she is situated, I wanted to afford her the opportunity to see you introduce herself, you to do the same, but also thank her for the work that she's been doing over the last few weeks, trying to assist us in finding inventory, particularly as it relates to fleet vehicles, because that has been an arduous task. So just want the opportunity to introduce Ms. Bullock and give you an opportunity to say hello.
So she's going to get us the steals and deals?
Pings and dings, steals and deals, whichever works best.
I'd like to come and shadow you one day to learn more about that work. That sounds really interesting. Nice to see you. Thank you for being here today.
Thanks, Ms. Bullock. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Simmons. All right, back to the adoption of the agenda. I think we did that, right?
We have a motion and a...
And we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, four zero. Thank you. Next, we have Presentations and Discussions, Policy BE, School Board Records, Dr. Warren.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
I want to present to you for first reading, Policy BE, related to School Board Records. The board and district are collaboratively reviewing and updating various board policies. At this time, we want to make a revision to the policy to include an updated definition of the term Open Records Act. And that was the only change, revision suggested in the policy to be current. Are there any questions that I can answer this time?
All right, with no questions, we'll move on to Policy JGFG, Student Accidents.
Yes, ma'am. Also presenting for first reading, Board Policy JGFG, Student Accidents, First Reading, based on minor revisions in terms of the wording of the process, two minor revisions, and that's it in the policy. Any questions related to student accidents?
Questions based on these particular ones, I'm just making sure, I'm just assuming, and I don't want to assume, that our board attorney gets these also and is looking these over prior to today and has any legal input into some of the, you know, I know the one right before this has a little bit more to do with the Open Records Act and things like that, where we might want some input, but is that happening?
So whatever's just right, they probably happen this time. You know, it's never...
I just think going forward in the future, that we just make sure that we don't step into, as we're making any changes or things, that we step into anything that's not legal.
I agree with that. So just so that we're clear on a process, so when it is released to the board, it is also released to the board attorney. So at that time, their due diligence is to review the packet, just like we are to review the packet. So if it is released to us, it's also released to the board attorney. So at that time, the firm is able to review and make corrections. That is what should be happening. If that is not happening, then that's a conversation we need to have.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Doss, for bringing it up. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for reiterating, in some ways, what I think many of us just may believe to be in place. My suspicion is that in the transition, we're sending a packet somewhere, but maybe not to the appropriate person, as the transition is still working out. I'll ask Ms. Ray, until I can clarify, we'll add a packet, we'll maintain the packets that are going out until Smith Welch can help us discern when we only need to send the packet to one representative in the office. It has been my understanding, that was the purpose of the attorney getting the packet. So I have made some assumptions, but what I do not believe we have done this month is provided Elizabeth with a packet. And so we will make sure that that happens tonight or tomorrow. Ma'am, we will get you an electronic version of these documents, so that we can begin that work and we can figure out what works between you and I on behalf of the board.
And then I was, that I don't know, since we're going to be able to draw...
Right.
I was not sent with any instructions from the town.
Right.
But I've never taken any of that.
Right.
I just can't.
So my question becomes, now that you have the policy in front of you, what do you think about this particular policy as it relates to student accidents and school board records?
Well, I just want to ask you this. Do you want me to take a look and then revise that with the board later? Or are you going to review it right now? And is that an opinion?
So if we could go, are we able to go back to a particular policy? We can do that, right? So, yeah. So if we can go back to Policy BE, School Board Records, from the revisions that were made in lines 14 through 19, do you have an opinion on that?
So without having the Open Records Act in front of me, I would say that if this language came from data from the Open Records Act, that would be the appropriate language to have in the policy.
Okay.
It did. It did come from Official Code of Georgia annotated, and I researched and compared this policy along several other school districts in the state, and they include the new definition. Came out in 2016. I think the last time a policy was revised was 2014.
Okay. I'm all good. I just wanted to make sure that we had discussed that, because I knew we were in this transition, and Tim has always been very open to share his opinion and thoughts.
Correct.
I'm sure if he had any, he would have done that.
Okay. All right. So I am, I'm good with that one. So if we go to Policy JGFG, because I'm sure this is also, if this type of accident happens on campus, is this also, will we be updated, the board be updated through a survey report? Okay. I'm good.
These two policies and other districts' policies will remain posted on 30 days on our similar website for board feedback and input, as well as general public stakeholder input and the board attorney.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Warren.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, Dr. Moore, Policy JCDA, Student Code of Conduct.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Simmons. I am presenting Board Policy JCDA, Student Code of Conduct for First Reading. It is recommended for revision at this time in order to add revised language of fundamental student behavior expectations.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Would you like me to repeat?
That's fine.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
So we are presenting the revision of Board Policy JCDA, Student Code of Conduct for First Reading. This Board Policy JCDA, Student Code of Conduct is recommended for revision at this time in order to add in revised language of fundamental student behavior expectations. Are there any questions?
I have a question, Dr. Moore. With regard to student code of conduct that we are looking at today, in the continuation of a small group of students attending school, school only to disrupt, how do you see this body moving forward with these disruptions to find a balance of protecting the learning and removing constant disruptions?
How do we, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
How do we, this board, this body, see moving forward with these disruptions to find a balance of protecting the learning and removing constant disruptions?
So I think with this language in here, it's specific to the students. They're not specific as of now, and that way, we can align them with the PBIS expectations. We can communicate with them effectively, with parents as well as students. And then with that being said, then our administrators can go forward with presenting these different types of policies in front of the students. Right now, the students don't have a specific, what we're asking them to do in the policy. When we're ambiguous, it leads for behaviors that we don't want. So if we take the ambiguity out of it, then we can see better behavior.
Well, because I'm concerned, it's not happening only in Griffin Spalding, it's happening all over this country. And I, I do believe, and I want to be careful with my words here, I want to protect those that went to Griffin High School today, Spalding High School, all of our other schools, I want to protect those that came to school today to learn and move forward, because they deserve to be protected from those students who bring stuff in off the streets over the weekend and disrupt the learning process. Now, and I spoke with Mr. Brown earlier and sent some questions to Dr. Simmons earlier today. If this needs to be done and reworded and make it harder for those students who want to continue to disrupt, we have to protect those that want to come to school and learn. So my hope is, as a board member, that we will have by next school year, gives us several months to get this in place, and I told Dr. Simmons earlier today, I've done a copious amount of research on how school systems are dealing with this all over this country, and I did not find the golden answer. You know, you do it this way, there are, with any behavior, there's consequences, you know, and good things, positive things and negative things happen, and that's pretty much what my research showed. If you do this, then this happens. And I just want to protect those that want to do well in Griffin Spalding, and I think every one of us in this room want that as well.
I agree.
As it, if I may, Madam Chair, as it relates to the policy, I think that Student Services has addressed a couple of things in how they plan to support our students, even within this policy. So if you look at lines 17 through 20, where it talks about the process that is designed and what they to consider, and then in lines 22 through 26, it talks, which everybody on this board is in favor of, progressive discipline. So I think the things that need to be done in order to support scholars where they are at the schools, and to support them at the school level, I think it is addressed in this policy. I think the question, or what we should be doing as a governance team, is looking at the policy and seeing that if it's something that is not addressed, we're able to address it within the policy. So I hope within the next 30 days, the board will be able to provide more insight and more input as to what the policy should say. So in regards to your question, and as we continue to just work on policies together as a board, you and I can talk offline, and what we can do is get with Dr. Moore and the superintendent to see if there's any other language that we may want to put in or take out, so that it fully supports what our scholars are going through in the district.
Dr. Moore, in your experience, and as I mentioned earlier, we all know that our world is different today for various reasons. You know, I told someone earlier this week, I still feel like I'm trying to get back to my new normal. I'm not quite sure I'm there yet. It may take a while. However, in your experience, have, never mind, I'll save my questions to when we meet. That's probably best. That's fine. There's no problem.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think if we look at line 197, in my, just in my opinion, that is going to be the most important piece, where it states that the superintendent or his, they shall develop procedures as necessary for implementation. One thing, one thing that I feel strong about with policy, we can put anything on paper, but how we implement it, how we prosecute the process is what's going to be important. So I personally would lay that on the superintendent and his professional staff, because we can put anything on paper, but if we don't have a viable process on how we're going to implement it, it's only going to be for naught. So that's what I'm looking for, to see what superintendent recommends, or how we're going to process it, because this is, as Madam Chair stated, this is something that the entire nation is dealing with. But it's something that we can't get a handle on, and that's what I'm looking at, the process, how we're going to implement it, what we're going to do. Because a part of that is talking with the juvenile judges, because if, what I hear from resource officers, they can write up stuff, but once they go before the juvenile judges, they just get a, you know, kind of a slap on the wrist. We gotta, we gotta include them in the process. So, you know, we can, we can work out the wording on the policy, but I'm more interested in how we're going to prosecute this thing.
So that would be a regulation as to, that would be a regulation leader versus the policy which sets it up, and so...
Right. But as I stated in line 197, that encompasses how the superintendent is going to implement this, the process that we're going to go through to implement the policy. And that's what, that's what's going to be affected, not the policy. It's going to be how we implement it and how we prosecute. You on the same page?
We are not.
I mean, what I'm saying is, we can have anything we want on paper, but if we're not going to, if we're not going to implement it, we don't have a strategy, how we going to implement it. It's just words on paper. That's what I'm saying in a nutshell.
Okay. And I get that part, but the policy is important, because if there's...
I didn't say it wasn't important. I said what was important to me was how we implement it. Line 197, how we develop the procedures on how we're going to implement it. That's what I'm saying. Not saying that the policy not important, what's important is how the superintendent and his staff develop procedures to implement what we put down as the policy. That's what I'm saying. Go ahead.
May I?
Yes, sir.
So I do want to thank this board for asking the questions relative to, one, where do we stand as it relates to confronting behaviors that compromise the business of educating students? Where do we stand and how do we intend to move forward, so that those who desire to come to school for the reasons that we want are able to do so and be supported? I've asked Mr. Harper to pull up the district's roadmap to success. I think now's the time where I will say to you, this is something that we are committed to, because it speaks to the district's strategic plan. It doesn't necessarily talk about behavior, so to speak. It doesn't necessarily talk about discipline. What you're going to read there on the bottom line, relative to organizational and operational efficiency, is presenting a safe and supportive learning environment. You're going to see things that talk about aligning our resources to student and staff needs, and you're going to talk about having an effective and efficient operations. So the effective and efficient operations was presented via the policy. It's the resources and the safe learning environment, that's where this regulation that Mr. Brown is talking about. But here is what I would like to offer, because I think that the platform is appropriate. We are seeing a litany of undesired behavior in our schools, whether it be the language that students use, whether it be the violence that they portray, whether it be the level of disrespect or incivility. I will share with you that we do have to take into account, when you hear things like CCRPI, when you hear things like Safe School Reports, when you hear things like, you know, student and staff engagement, culture and climate, there has to be a balance, because I can share with you how to eradicate that behavior. I'm just not sure what the number of our enrollment will look like when I'm finished. And that's just me being honest. I think what you're trying to figure out is how do we support those who desire support? How do we educate those who desire education? How do we take care of the adults who show up to teach? And how do we take care of the kids who show up to learn? On top of redirecting those who show up for alternative ulterior motives. That's where the regulation comes into play. If I'm candid, we have been stretched, because in some ways, we are trying to figure out how to show support to families, because everything and everyone has been impacted by the last two years. We get that. We understand that. At the same time, we're trying to figure out how to ensure that when students leave us, they can read, write, speak, and solve. And in many ways, I'm not going to compromise reading, writing, speaking, and solving, because of undesired behavior, or poor behavior, or fighting, or anything to that effect. But I do have to take into account, in many ways, when kids show up at the 18 schools and three programs in Griffin, that's all the support that they're going to get that day. And we have to be careful about how we render that support, because as you've heard me say to the adults, just because we're offering support, doesn't mean like, doesn't mean that it feels like support. We're going to work through this, and this is a part of the process. I really appreciate your being interested, because you're going to hear from your constituents, you're going to hear from business owners, you're going to hear from students who feel like they were not given enough opportunity to demonstrate their desire to stay in school, or who've not been given enough support for their children who want to be in school. That's a fine line that we're walking. I'm going to need your support and your, in many ways, direction, because it ebbs and flows. But I don't want you to wonder if we are not mindful or intentional about how we're going to ensure that students are educated, how we're ensuring that our students and staff are supported. I know that Ms. McDonald talked about the small few, and in many ways, in the 10,000, this small few is about 100. Some of that 100, you know, has lost their welcome. I'm just beyond what they're willing to do. You've heard me say, I'm not asking students to meet me halfway, I'm asking them to be in my line of sight. But in that line of sight, if they are compromised, if they're compromising the education for the most, I have to remove them. You're going to hear more about that. We're trying to balance with schools, the number of referrals, the number of placements at the alternative school, without diminishing our ability to educate kids. And so, again, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Brown, about the board's efforts to lean into policy development, because that's how we do the work. And in this day and age, as you, as you hear me talk about the need for detection devices and random sweeps and random searches, all of those things to ensure that we can simply have school, that's where we are. It has not always been that way, and it won't always be this way. So again, thank you for allowing me to provide some clarity. Dr. Moore, thank you for presenting that policy.
Also, this afternoon, saw a news clip from, where is Tri Cities High School locally?
East Point.
DeKalb?
East Point.
Fulton?
Fulton.
They had a little, it was a student mental health blurb on the, I think it was the 12 o'clock news, where they are using restorative circles. Sure everyone in the room has heard that, which to me was appealing, as a teacher years ago, where I did it and I didn't even know what I was doing. Now it has a name. But, you know, we may get to, we may have to hire more mental health people. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there to, to help us through this rough period. And I can assure you, Dr. Simmons, you have my support. It's just, those 100 have got to be dealt with, to do what's best for the most, and I'm a firm believer in that. So, thank you. And I believe, Dr. Moore, you, are we finished with JCDA then, board? All right, we can move on to the next, Policy JGC, Student Health Services?
Yes, ma'am. We are presenting Board Policy JGC, Student Health Services for First Reading. Board Policy JGC, Student Health Services is not recommended for revision at this time.
Okay. I think everyone's okay with that? Yes, sir?
As though if I needed a change, I could voice it, if that's what you're asking.
I think we're good. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
All right, Dr. Simmons, the 2023 Board Meeting Dates?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members, staff, guests. Board, the intent of this discussion or presentation is to really generate some conversation around the board's established work session and business meeting dates for the calendar year 2023. I'll share with you that currently, on the first of the month, the board has its normally scheduled business meeting. the board has its normally scheduled business meeting. On the third of the month, the board has its work session. The proposal that you see before you changes that to where on the first of the month, the work session would occur. On the third of the month, the business meeting would occur. The primary rationale behind that thinking is to ensure that there is some continuity. Currently, the way that it works is we could very well leave the rear end of one month and carry a discussion into another month. That makes it difficult to keep up with the presentation in the rear and the action in the front as opposed to now wanting to put a presentation before you in the front and an action in the rear, but also being able to thematically come up with topics and agenda items that will enable us an entire month to see things to fruition. A couple of things that I'll ask you to take into consideration before I engage you in discussion this evening. One, I'm going to ask that you consider the cadence and the dates. Again, this is just my thinking. It doesn't necessarily represent your own. So if you have calendar events that you know would compromise our ability to meet these dates, I'd like to hear about that. We don't have to resolve all of that this evening, but this is my attempt to create that conversation. An additional one would be to share or determine your pleasure as it relates to the sequence when we have work sessions and there is no indicated date for a business meeting. For an example, April 11th, 2023, we have a work session scheduled. There's no board meeting on that date, but we typically would have a retreat in that season, if you would. I'm going to ask that you share with me if that sequence works, if you would prefer to have a retreat earlier or later. But wherever you see a blank, I'm going to ask if you're okay with the blank being on the business side or the work session side. The last piece that I'll offer, the reason that I put that there in this first iteration is because the board has yielded its pleasure to take action. And so, in my practice and perspective, as long as you're willing to take action, I don't see a whole lot of delineation between the work session and the board meeting. I try to use the board meeting for presentations as little as I can action and the business for action and as little as needed a presentation. So that's my thinking, but I would love to hear your thinking initially, knowing that it is my intent to bring before you a recommendation to adopt the calendar meetings for the academic, or calendar year rather, 2023 at your December business meeting. Are there any questions?
As far as I'm concerned, I like the idea of there always being a board meeting during the month rather than, and if we're having to not have something, it should be a work session. I am fine if you want to flip-flop like in April. If you want to make April 11th the board retreat and April 25th the board meeting. Doesn't matter to me. So, but I think that having the work session and having a retreat in the same month without a board meeting is not necessarily the best practice.
Any other suggestions or comments for myself and Mrs. Ray as we chronicle that?
So, Mr. Doss, if you feel that way in April, I'm sure you probably feel that way in September.
Right, I mean, yeah, that's what I would do. And so like the July 18th, because that's the only one in the month, it just needs, the date needs to be slid over to board meeting rather than work session. Because, I mean, the general public, we give opportunity for public comments mostly at that work meeting. If there is something on the agenda, there can be a public comment at a work session, but it has to be limited directly to that agenda. And so not giving opportunity for the public, I don't think is a good idea.
I would agree with that, and I think the rationale behind you flip-flopping these, it makes sense to me, so I would support that. But I agree with Mr. Doss, we must give our, the public and our constituents an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
If desired.
And so again, it is not my expectation nor ask to have you take action this evening. Wanted to create the conversation, get the platform, get your feedback so that next month, we would have a calendar of dates that you are in support of, that you can explain if given a question from a constituent or someone on the staff.
I guess the biggest thing is, is I don't know if April 11th retreat is as doable after spring break or if you needed more time of preparation for that, but I'll leave that up to y'all to think that through.
Okay, and we really just tried to follow the template that's currently in place. So in many ways, these dates are more or less placeholders. But again, I wanted to afford you the opportunity to begin to think about it. It's your meeting. I simply make sure that it happens the way you want it to happen and when you want it to happen.
As long as we don't run into the Housewives shows I watch.
I did make note that there will be no conflict with the Housewives, Yellowstone's, or Buccaneers and Falcons games. Any other comments for me?
I noticed that you have the GSBA Winter Conference on there. If you are wanting to put that, you may want to put the GSBA Summer Conference.
Summer Conference. So in some ways, we talked about that as a staff and Ms. Ray and I talked about that. We typically had not seen a collective attendance, whereas in the Winter Conference, there's typically a quorum. So we wanted to make sure that this was about that. This also represents opportunities in which there is a quorum, not as much conference dates.
There was in your form, there was in, before you got here in your former life. We did go. I haven't been to Savannah in, gosh, three years, I don't think.
Well, I'm told it's nice. It's not one of my favorites.
I know.
Mr. Brown makes it every year. That right, Mr. Brown?
Understood. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Simmons. All right, next, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board members. Good to see you again. This financial report's through October 31st, which is four months into FY '23. And as usual, we usually report out on the balance sheet, page one, the general fund and nutrition. So general fund, you'll notice if you look backwards on some prior reports, these will start to drop on our bottom yellow, 28 million. I talked to, actually, Mr. Ledbetter sent me an email the other day on the tax when those are going to be routed through Ms. Hollum's office, mailed out and due by the end of December. So will the tax bills. So those will start picking up here soon. In the next two reports, that figure will begin to go up. Over to the right with nutrition, he still, Mr. Wheeler's office still has a healthy fund balance. And again, this is reflective of prior year plus some items on the report I'll show you in a minute, which he's picked up in the current year. Page two is again your general fund financial statement. The left yellows show the current month. So you can see with little local revenue being collected, we're about 2 million, 2.5 million more in spending than revenue, which that's normal right now till the collections come in. So so far for the year, 6.5 million more in spending than revenue. Again, in January, you'll see that flip. Page three is the special revenues. I've cautioned you this the last couple of months. You see very little revenue at the top on those yellows and that's because we're still waiting on some Department of Education approval of budgets. They have to do that annually. Some of that through Ms. Austin's office, through my office, and getting that stuff approved at the DOE, Department of Education. When that happens, we'll start doing some bulk drawdowns, bringing that money back in. The positive of that is the cash flow that we have right now. We don't have to borrow money to be able to front those expenses. So that's another good reason we had the millage rate discussion this year for that. Page four is the nutrition operating statement. You can see 2.6 million dollars in revenue so far this year with 1.8 million in expense. So about 850,000 to the good so far for FY '23 for nutrition. Page five is our fiduciary statement. About 28.2 million in money that we're housing in the LGIP or state pool accounts. I want to just, if you'll look under the column that says rate, since the Fed's been increasing the interest rates here lately, that about six months ago was .5 of 1%. So it's almost up to 3% now, which is good for interest earnings. And page six, again, third month of collections on, of year three, 1.153 million in splosts. Brings us to almost 29 million collected so far. So again, that's outstanding. You've heard me say that month after month. So it hasn't dropped, it's almost been a year since it's dropped under a million and that's with the suspension of the gas tax still in place. Any questions?
Oh, thank you.
I just had a question for Mr. Wheeler about the steamer at Jackson Road. How long does it take to get that equipment in for a school? Just curious. Ooh. Wow, that's a long time. Sorry, I was just curious. Sorry, Mr. Wheeler.
So we're placing orders for that, but there's supplies of those equipments, things like that. They're taking about roughly six months. A lot of the things we ordered for the summer, we just got put over in Cowan Elementary. So it's hard to get that stuff, but they're changing the prices as we go.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I was just curious. Thank you. All right, Board members, you, thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate it. You have your information items, which include the construction renovation progress summary and the monthly facilities and maintenance report. And we do need to go into executive session tonight, so I'll need a motion to go into executive session, please.
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of to discuss or deliberate upon the employment of personnel.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, 4-0. We will move to executive session. Thank you all for being here today. Appreciate what you do for us on a daily basis. Thank you.
Ms. Battle, I want to ask you a question before you leave.
Ms. Battle?
Do we get a crash course on how to get in? Okay, it's just like a hotel room then, is that what you're saying? Which hotel do we get for Atlanta? And we'll get all that information on the 29th? Okay. Cool, thank you. Appreciate it. I have a car to use from here? For sure? Because I kind of need to know. Okay. Okay, okay. And for the older people, it was dangerous. Just say it. Just kidding.
Your wheelie is my ankle. Way better, no good.
You're right. And I'm thankful. I'm good, Dr. Warren. I just got up on my tiptoes last week in PT. I got a ways to go, but I'm doing good. I go to Pace Therapy on Highway 20 across from rooms to go. Allen Pace. Yes. Yeah, the first time last week, I was on my tiptoes. This is the first time. Yeah, yeah, it's good. Good to see you.